And I'm going to call this order, order to this emergency meeting. We have all counselors in attendance with the exception of Counselor Linda Caprera, who we are expecting to zoom in at some point. At, as of now, we will go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. Good evening. But tonight, everyone's, the council has been called here for an emergency meeting in accordance with Title 30A, Section 2103, Section 1B. And that being that 1B, the municipal officer shall make the appointments in accord, for the Charter Commission in accordance with municipal custom or bylaws within 30 days after the election approving the establishment of the Charter Commission. This is also in accordance with the emergency rules and reference Section 2 of our town, Town Council rules and the reconsideration in reference to Section 15 of our Town Council rules. So the idea, the intent for tonight is to hear from all of our applicants. And so tonight, we have James Laflamme is joining us by Zoom. We've got Colleen Sousa had to be at a family event. Betty Harris Howard, Shayna Dulock, and Gil Susie are all here present. So we will go ahead and get started with the resident, with the applicants, each speaking with them, and then we will open it up for discussion with the public. Thank you. So we will begin with the applicants. If they would like to come to the podium, we will start with those that were presented. We'll actually begin with the letter that we received for reconsideration, and then I will turn it over to the applicants to. Okay. So I received, we received the email. Greetings, my name is Shayna Dulock, and I'm writing to ask the Winthrop Town Council to reconsider my application for the Town Charter Committee. I grew up in this area, graduated from Winthrop High School in 2004, and have lived in Winthrop for the last five years. I have a rich history and deep connections with this town. As I continue building my life here, I feel compelled to do more for Winthrop and its people. That is why I'm seeking to join the Town Charter Committee. I have worked in the admissions department of higher education institution, institution since 2009. In addition to counseling thousands of prospective students, I have developed training materials, interviewed and hired new staff, developed processes for new student enrollment, created business partnerships through B2B programs, and much more. I have made a career out of understanding people's goals, then guiding them on their journey to achieve those goals through educational pursuit. I believe the Town Charter Committee would benefit from my skills and experience. I also believe I can offer the committee a broader perspective. Winthrop has a population of 6,231. The median age is 43 years, and about 17% of the population is between the ages of 33 and 34. Approximately 52% of the population is female. However, the Town Charter Committee currently has only one member under the age of 40, and only one member who is a woman. To best serve the people of Winthrop, the committee should more closely resemble them. By joining the committee, I would provide greater representation for Winthrop's women and younger generations. Thank you for taking the time to read my request letter. I hope you will reconsider my application for the Town Charter Committee. So thank you for your letter. We will invite you to speak first, and then we will turn it over to Betty Harris Howard, to Gil Susie, and James Laflamme, who's online. And if Colleen Sousa is available, then we will turn it over to her.
Linda's there, can you unmute?
Hello. My name is Shayna Dulock, and I did send that letter for reconsideration. After seeing that there was only one woman representation on the Charter Committee, and only one person under the age of 40, I didn't really think that represented the town of Winthrop. And I thought that we should reconsider the members on the committee so that we could actually represent the people on the town of Thrup, in the town of Thrup.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone on the council have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And I, and I do believe you are. But why weren't you present when we conducted our initial vote?
Fortunately, on Mondays, I work till 7:00, 8:00 PM because in admissions, we all have a late night. So unfortunately, Mondays are my late night, serving my students.
I, I think you could have escaped for a few minutes and came online, something like that.
Unfortunately, I do have scheduled appointments with my students late on Mondays. So I do have scheduled appointments on Mondays those nights. So I was serving my students that night.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'm Betty Harris Howard, and my experiences have, have been mainly with being an administrator of nursing homes. I worked, did the total business part of the facility. I worked with families. I worked with residents, aides, nurses. And I feel that my experience with working with all types of people helped me to be able to develop some, like a charter, because I understand how people work in different positions and how they see it, they see them. I've also owned a business, taxes and bookkeeping, terrible taxes. Does anybody have any questions?
You currently serve on the planning board, is that correct?
That's correct.
What part of the charter is, is most interesting to you?
I think the part that's interesting most to me is the organization of how one party plays with another party, and how they, they, we put them together, but we have to make them coincide, not go opposite directions. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gil Susie.
Good evening, I'm Gil Susie. I fully agree with the Facebook post that was on a couple of weeks ago, and I've read the young lady's letter. And it does seem that the commission is off balanced a little bit. I would have liked to see these ladies running for the election, which I think is what this town needs, it needs more people getting involved. Counselor White and I spoke before he became a counselor, and, and my big hot button was to try to get more younger people involved in the town. You know, some, some of us aren't getting any younger, and we have our own ways of doing things. For example, I retired from telecommunications after 30 years. You know, some, some of my big, my big hits were processes and procedures, legal matters. So again, I think I, I, I'm in, I'm in a good position to review the charter and move the town forward. And that's, that's the one thing that I don't want to see us, I don't want to see us go backwards. I want to see these processes. Again, my experience with, with the quarry, there were some loose ends that needed to be tied up in, in the, the ordinances. Glad it got done. But again, we shouldn't have to face that, you know, in a moment of crisis. This should be reviewed. Again, I don't know how often we need to review the charter or the ordinances, but it needs to be looked at on a regular basis with an eye towards the future of this town, not just the past. Any questions?
What part of it, as far as you're concerned with the charter, charter specifically, what part of it do you have the interest in?
I'm not concerned with anything until we start with the, with attorney associate and review what the, the current processes are, the, the best, the best practices are. I'm sure that some, some of the stuff that was written 20, 30, 50 years ago, things have improved on that since. And maybe not. Again, you know, the, the, the truth sometimes is, is the plainest thing that you can see, right? It's, it's, it's been written a long time ago, and it's there still. So I'm not, I'm not advocating for major changes. I'm advocating for a review, and if changes need to be made to bring the charter up to speed, up to the 20th century, and we'll work on the 21st century after that. But right now, we'll work on the 20th century. Let's bring it up to, to speed, and then we can go from there. Now, you guys are too kind. Thank you.
James on?
Yes.
James, is there anything that you'd like to continue or to add to last meeting?
I think everybody, you know, I introduced myself to the council and the, and the people that were in attendance. You know, I've been in Winthrop for 38 years. I raised my three children in Winthrop. They all attended Winthrop Public Schools. I was involved in a lot of youth sports teams. My wife has worked in town for a business that's been around for over 40 years, for the last 28 years, knows a lot of the townspeople there as well. I just would like to serve the town in a different capacity. I am retired, and I have a lot of time that I'd like to give back to the community and get involved with the Charter Commission.
Jim, after going back and reviewing the applications, one question that stood out to me on your application was the desire to swap to, take a step back in time here and swap back over to a select board. Can you, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I was very transparent in my application, and that's the way I operate.
I appreciate that, by the way.
And I think a board of selectmen would get more community involvement. Our, our people, when you talk to people in town and they start complaining about this and this, we can't vote on that. I think, you know, an annual town meeting, I mean, there are several communities in the state of Maine, a lot larger towns, Kennebuck, Wells, they operate with a board of selectmen type, type of government. And from what I understand, it really allows the people a say in everything that happens in this town. And I think we want more involvement. And Mr. Susie just stated, younger people need to get involved. And, you know, a lot of younger people kind of just washing their hands today. This happened. There's nothing I can do about it. You know? I just think it would increase community involvement. I think, you know, I, I'm not saying the council has, has made bad decisions. I'm just saying it would give an opportunity for the people to get more involved in those decisions. And that's why I'm for that board of selectmen type of government. And there are different forms of that, you know? We can have a board of selectmen with a town manager, or you can, I mean, there's different forms of that type of government.
Yeah. We all, we always advocate for people to come up to the town meetings and, you know, if they have some sort of concerns or anything like that, and there's, a lot of times, nobody's in the audience. So we, we always advocate for that to be, you know, them get involved. So that, that's, I just want that on the record, that, that's always something that we're looking for.
That's it.
Very much, Mr. Laflamme. Application, I'll just read was for Colleen Sousa, who is unfortunately unable to attend to a family event. Application, reason for applying was she said she cares deeply for the town of Winthrop and its community. Serving on this committee is a great opportunity for me to contribute to a town where I have lived and worked for many years. I live in Winthrop, I've lived in Winthrop for approximately 21 years. I've also worked for Winthrop Public Schools for approximately 14 years. My school knowledge would be helpful when reviewing the portion of the charter that is related to school governance. Has also served on multiple hiring committees. For the short time she's worked as an administrative assistant to the interim town manager, she enjoyed her involvement in municipal government. So at this time, I will open it up for any public comment. If there's anyone online or would like to come to the podium, I'd ask that you keep it under three minutes, and please state your name. Yep.
Oh, my God, I thought those. My name is Sandy Steele, and I just, I understand that this is needed, and it's the process. And it's time, it's been a long time. The things that are concerning me are certain things that I'm hearing. My hope is, after everything this town has gone through in the last four or five years, that we're doing the charter, and the folks that are going to be on the charter are in it for the right reasons. My concern is that looking at the charter is a small portion of it, but there are many other things that people have issues with. And my hope is that everyone involved here is on the up and up, and doing it for the purpose of upgrading the charter, not for other reasons that I'm hearing out on the streets that are, that are troubling me a bit, because I feel like that makes us go backwards to where we were five years ago. And, you know, the charter needs to be done, but I just hope that everyone's going to do it with the right purpose in mind. So I just needed to express that, because it's been bothering me, what I'm hearing, some of it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Steele.
My name's Dick Garrett, and I, I asked Madam Chairperson, why does this constitute an emergency? This meeting, why does this constitute an emergency?
So as we were asked to reconsider, so under the Charter Commission state law, it needs, our appointments need to be completed within 30 days.
I understand that. And we voted, you folks in good standing, you took a vote, you sent all these folks the letters saying that they were on the committee. Where was a 27-hour notice, a 72-hour notice for this meeting? Because I didn't see it anywhere. Where is it?
Did not do a 72-hour notice?
Well, you need, well, that's why I asked you to shut down the meeting, because legally, you need to have a 72-hour notice. Anyways, I, the other thing is, on this, on this board, I wasn't even, I'm a, I'm on the committee. I wasn't even notified. I don't know if any of the other committee members were notified, but I wasn't. And I, I don't know why I wasn't. But getting back to the board, back to the, there's no criteria for this, and there wasn't a criteria. To me, it looks really, doesn't look good. The two folks had people come in, people, everybody had the same chance to come in, speak their piece, you all voted, you voted unanimously for these two fellows, and then all of a sudden, kaboom, come bang, we don't like that. How can you do that? How can you face a general public and say, no, we don't like this, we're going to reconsider everything? After you all voted and approved it, sent them all letters and saying you're on the committee? How, I mean, I don't get it. I just don't understand. And it's like the 72-hour notice. Where was that? Where was it?
Dick Garrett.
Pardon me?
Said I've answered you. Do you have any other comments?
No, you didn't answer me. You didn't get, where is the 72-hour notice?
I answered you that we did not put out a 72-hour notice.
Well, don't you think you should? That's the law. It's a state statue in the town statue.
Do you have any other comments regarding the Charter Commission appointment, sir?
No, I, I think, I think this will work out, and I think everybody's in it for the best of it, Sandy, you know? And, yeah, well, that's, that's great. And, but I think everything will work out. I've been here a lot longer than any of you guys sitting around here, 69 years, and I care about the town, I care about the people in it. But do your job and do it right. And I don't think you've done your job right tonight or prior to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garrett. I don't believe, though we do have another person on Zoom that has raised their hand.
Steven, Steven, it's your chance to talk now.
Thanks, Anthony. Thank you, counsel. Sorry for being on the phone this evening. I just wanted to highlight just a few things that potentially could be of note for the Charter Commission as they go forward. It's one that having requirements and standards for committees might be an opportunity to ensure that committees are full of volunteers and community members who are volunteering their time, that have the appropriate expertise and representative, represent the different demographics of the community. I'd also just like to note that one of the conversations from the council, one of the comments from the council member was that they want to see increased engagement from a variety of community members of different demographics. And a great way to send that message is to, when those community members step forward, is to ensure that they're given voice on those different committees. I want to thank everybody who's spoken already, who's volunteered their time to demonstrate commitment to this community, and I thank the council for taking the time to make sure we get this right. The charter has a big impact on everything we do in town. Thank you all.
Seeing or hearing any, I will open it up to the Town Council.
I just wanted to say, I understand people being upset that we held this meeting, and it wasn't, it's not a side job. It's more of it to be transparent. I think I said in the last meeting we had, I'm a fairly new counselor still. I mean, I'm only going on, this is my really three years. I was on for a little short term, so I'm still learning a lot. I felt as though we didn't follow the process the way we should have, and how we appoint people. And what I learned with everything in watching some, the other, you know, being, watching some of the other councils and being on the appointments committee, I think I'd rather had opportunity to interview the applicants, had a discussion with them, had more time to review that, and then bring forth who I felt is be the best candidate for the position. We were given the applicants, and I'm just, no blame on anybody, this is just the applicants were given this, and I know we were kind of getting this thing through. I, even I take a step back and I did some more research myself today, and everyone's kind of helping me, because I, I tried to do the best I can to research it, because this is a lot of work. I mean, I know Mr. Laflamme was talking about being on the select board, you know? But this is not a fair, faint of hearts. I mean, to do this and to do this right, you just don't come up and show up and sit at a meeting. I mean, I try to do as much research as I can within the time that I have, either work and family and everything else. I just feel though, as we, we put through the, the vote in June to put a Charter Commission together, and also put the committee together at the same time. And hindsight, that probably wasn't the best idea. And just looking forward, I just felt like this, we might have been rushing this. So I was in favor of holding this meeting to be transparent, to let the people come up and say, to be heard, and have everybody else be heard and understand it. Not looking to change a whole lot of anything that's going to happen tonight, but, you know, I just felt as though people needed to hear and, and understand what was happening. And I wanted to be here to say, I felt like we rushed this thing through a little too fast for me. Don't know about anybody else, that's just my take on it. I will ask one thing from this whole thing. I, I know people that were voted in, people that were voted in from the election, and people were voted in for the appointments from the other night. And I stand that we did it, do it legally, and I understand that that's probably where we'll stand with this. I will turn, and I'll ask my fellow council member, Andy West, I know you were voted in, would you consider maybe stepping down from being voted in where we have council representation to allow us to make another appointee on this commission? And it's, and it's just asking you, and it, I'm wondering if you would be willing to do so.
Perhaps Aaron will step down.
I, I understand, but we voted him, and even you voted him in to be part, for, for the liaison from the council. I, I know you were voted in from the public, and, and it was just an ask, Andy, you could say, you could say no, and that's fine. I'm just, I'm just making the ask.
Answer is no loud and clear.
Very good.
You can shut up about it.
Well, I really don't need that. It was a very sincere and honest ask, Andy. You don't have to get snippy with me. I'd be honest with you on that. So I was just making, you, you were still talking, I have the floor, as you like to say. So, all right. Thank you for, everybody for showing up, everybody for coming to talk, and I appreciate that. I mean, I will say though, I do appreciate this, and I joined this governance, being on the Town Council, and I've enjoyed my time here. I can't imagine, I've talked with a few people that have done through select boards, no offense, Jim, that talking about select boards, but it's kind of a little bit different. And, and I don't know if I'd really want to be part of that. I kind of like how this flows and how we've done things. And I think since, since we've been on the council, because there was a lot of corruption and backhanded things before I got on, I think we've been very transparent, and we've done a lot of positive things in this town, and we're moving forward. So I'll, I'll rest at that. Thank you.
Andy, and then next, Zach.
So as Jim so adequately mentioned, I have the floor, no one's allowed to comment during that period. All right. First of all, this is blatantly an illegal meeting. Okay? I took the time to look in the dictionary, okay? And it says right here, this meeting was called as a special meeting. Okay? It doesn't say anything about emergency. As far as I'm concerned, we are asked to come to a special meeting. Secondly, special meetings may be called by at least four members of the council. Notice of meeting shall be served in writing to each member of the meeting. Notice for meeting shall set forth matters acted upon, and said meeting and nothing else should be voted upon in special meeting. Okay? In order to have a special meeting, you, you can't just gather four members together without public notice. So in order to have a special meeting, it needs to be scheduled at a town council meeting. We can't just decide to have a special meeting. Okay? And if we had the 72 hours notice, this might be a legal meeting, but we don't. Okay? Now, we get here, and we find out that it's being called an emergency meeting. Okay? And, and I took the time to look at Mr. Webster's information, and it describes emergency as serious, unexpected, dangerous, requiring immediate action, urgent, unexpected, usual, unusual danger situation that poses an immediate risk, health, life, safety, property, the environment, requires immediate action. This is not a dangerous situation. We've already voted and confirmed members. And for those that, I mean, this, anyway, but for those that couldn't be here, chose not to write a letter or contact us in any way, that just can't be helped. We did this. We reversed ourselves, I want everybody to think about this. We have, and this is a wild guess, 50 volunteers that have been appointed by the town on various committees. What is that going to tell? Okay? Those people that doubt us, we decide that we don't like them, or someone complains about their activity, we're going to have a new, whole new appointment? You know, we're going to reconsider that appointment that was done by unanimous vote? Teacher is just wrong. Just plain.
Anything else?
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Zach.
So I actually agree with most of the people here. I do feel as though it was rushed. I do feel like we're not going about it the right way. Those are kind of my personal beliefs, more, more as a, as a citizen of Winthrop. As a counselor, I decided to come here to represent the town, because that's what I decided to do when I decided to run. I got elected in, obviously, and I just, all of these facilities we have in town, whether it's the council, the commission, are important for the livelihood and the well-being of the community members. It's very important that all parties interested, and I have no reason to believe at the moment that no one has ill intentions. However, I, I, I really would challenge everyone who is on there now, whether you were voted in or appointed, to consider if you're willing to take on the responsibility of what you're about to do with this commission. If you are, I think that's great, and I, and I applaud the, you know, the, the want to, to give back to the community. I think it's important. This community gave. This community gave me a whole lot when I was under time of need. I, it's very core to me. I think it's very important. With that being said, I am not interested in reconsidering unless, you know, Aaron or Andy were willing to step down because I think the council has representation on the board. I don't think we need two. And if we want to intrigue and look into the fact that we want to appoint a new person outside of Gil and Jim, we should, we should make the decision as a council here that we can here, where one of you would step down and we would handle it then. I don't know what we can and cannot do. So I don't want to speak out of turn when I say that, but that is where I stand on the issues. And, and I hope everyone who has applied and who is on the commission is, is willing to be receptive and is also in for the right reasons, as, as Mrs. Steele shared earlier today. So that's it. So thank you.
Well, first off, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and tuning in on Zoom. I guess, you know, initially, when we started getting, you know, interest into doing the commission, it was, it's ironic because we honestly thought we weren't going to get enough people to join at the commission to even have an effective process. And then we thought we were going to have to appoint everyone. So I was happy to see that people ran and we were actually able to get one elected. Yeah, Matt Culbitz, right. And then we had the write-ins. So, you know, I was excited to see that. I do think, I do have a concern in the fact that, you know, we really didn't push out, you know, and maybe we should have come up with the, you know, range of priorities that we would have liked to see on the commission, meaning, you know, age, you know, a diversity of backgrounds and whatnot. That's, would probably would be the only way I would have reconsidered, you know, kind of how I took a vote. Right now, I'm, my concern would be with disenfranchising people to get involved in the process by changing and reconsidering. So, you know, and I, and I've talked to Jim and I don't think I agree with the select board, but I am more than happy to have a diverse people discussion about any point of view that may be represented in town. So, and I look forward to working with Mr. Garrett as well. So, you know, with that said, I don't think I'm willing to change how I voted earlier, but I do appreciate and understand the concern. And as far as like the legality of this meeting, I'm relying on our manager and the fact that I believe the town attorney was, you know, consulted. So with that being said, that's just where I'm at right now.
So I think my concerns are pretty validated by Andy's behavior tonight. I'm not quite sure. We're talking about working on the charter to update it and make the town better. I don't understand where all the anger is coming from, why everybody is angry, why council people are getting phone calls that are just nasty, why people are so upset about this. You are fixing the charter. You're updating a charter. The anger in this is what makes me concerned. So I'm not, I'm not sure. I think my worries are very valid. And Andy, I'm going to say this as a taxpayer. You, your behavior here tonight was disgusting. And you should not be talking to your fellow council people that way whatsoever. That, that makes me sick to see your behavior up here. So I'm going to say that. And I'd also like to say, I've been on the receiving end of not being heard in this community by a council. And I think that the council here has been more than receptive to hear everybody, whether they agree or not. It's open and you feel like as a taxpayer, you can come up here and you can at least express your opinions and at least be heard. So I feel like we have made huge progress in that. What I worry about is that we had a concerned citizen, clearly, who has spoken. And the anger that has been here tonight or the nastiness that is going around this room, we're again going back to not listening to the taxpayers. This woman, whoever she is, I'm not really sure, had a concern. And it is up to us as a community, all of the council members, all of the people on that board, to take that into consideration. I don't think anybody was coming in here with the plan to definitely change anything. I think it was to just step back and say, maybe we rushed. But this behavior tonight, I will, I want that on record that there's a problem here. And that is my biggest concern moving forward. This is not about fixing a charter. It is about things that are going on in this town that people aren't happy about. And this is a tool to get to a different position. So I just want that known.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Anything else online? Going to address that, the intent, Ms. Gil. Dana?
I just want to point out that there's about 3,032 registered voters here in Winthrop. And on the June 17th special elections, we only had about 426 voters actually voted. That's about 14%. 14% that actually voted on who's going to be on the charter. 14%. That's a very small number. So I make a motion that we maybe dissolve this charter committee and move it to the November election. So we have a bigger group of population voting on who's on the charter committee. And everyone who wants to be part of the charter committee, re-fill that another form so that it's on that election. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll just take a moment to acknowledge, I did get some expression from a resident in town requesting that if anyone had stepped down, consider a female applicant. Person did not go through the formal channel, so I did not acknowledge that at the time and requested that they do send that through the formal channel. So that's why I'm not disclosing a name. I was also informed by other residents that this did feel rushed. And it was requested that we push it back a week or a month. However, according to the state statutes and appointing personnel, it had to be within 30 days. And 30 days of the last election would take it to today. So that is July 17th. So when we look at reconsidering, the intent for tonight was to reevaluate how we conducted our last meeting. And I will honestly say that as the facilitator of the meeting, we were expected to come to the table with two qualified applicants each and have a discussion. I opened up the discussion with two recommendations. One went forward and then one, another one was this. We did have one person in the audience to attend and speak on their behalf. And I do appreciate that from those applicants. Now with that and the request to reconsider, we did decide as a, I felt that it was important that we sit there and go back and just hear from all of our applicants and that we do take input from the public. And so I do appreciate everyone that was able to show up tonight or to zoom in to share their concerns or share their insight or share their perspectives. I think that's very important. And so if there is a motion to reconsider, then that is something that the, the council may vote on. But that is something we also may choose not to do. And so we chose to go through with this meeting just to allow that voice to our, our residents and our community stakeholders. And now I do want to kind of add on to what James had said that we do ask that any of the applicants and any of those who are already elected into the position or appointed to consider the roles of the commission. And so that commission will be electing a chairman, a vice chairman and a secretary. They will be submitting, they will have a small budget that we do have to put together. And within nine months, they need to provide a preliminary report. Within 12 months, there will be another final report. And then the municipal officers may then extend the time limits for another 24 months. This is a very extensive commitment. And so we do ask that all of the applicants, all of the appointed, all of the elected personnel, like I just said, on the commission, be dedicated. This is for the betterment of our community. The last time that this charter was updated was in, what was that? 18, 2007. It was 18 years ago. So it's been 18 years. And so we're, what we're looking at is maybe every five or 10 years, we should relook at this and not wait another 20 years, almost. So that's all I have to say. And I do appreciate everyone coming out. And like I said, everyone online. Thank you.
It seems that personal animosities have once again reared their heads. And I would only ask people that seem to have that personal problem that they would just kind of get over it. Okay? I, I haven't talked, I mean, to Mrs. Steele in God knows months. And Shannon and I, Shayna, I'm sorry, talked maybe once. You know, I don't know where all this is coming from. And Jim, and, and Jim's comment, asking me specifically to resign. If he'd have said, maybe someone would resign, that's a reasonable statement. But he definitely targeted me. Okay? And this kind of thing has just got to stop. We can't work as a functioning body in the governance of the town with these kinds of attitudes. What I presented tonight was my thought and belief that this is an illegal meeting that was not aimed at anyone personally. No person. Only question and I asked Shayna was why she didn't make it here tonight? She gave an adequate answer and I was happy. But I could tell she kind of got her back up. And that's unfortunate. So, you know, this personal stuff, it's just got to stop.
Well, I'd like to just clear the floor with the targeting accusation because certainly know what it's like to be targeted. But I wanted to completely understand, Andy, it's that I had you being part of this group. I was mostly asking you just plainly, wasn't like directing you. But I just thought, well, this might give us an opportunity to put somebody else on that committee or commission where we already voted Aaron to represent the council and you were voted in. But you're here and connected and you also read everything, the documentation that we had. It was, wasn't a target towards Andy. It was just an opportunity to ask you. Maybe you would consider it so maybe somebody else could sit in that seat. So it wasn't a target. So I'll just leave it at that. Didn't appreciate the accusation.
I didn't appreciate it.
I just want to say, can I just, can I just interrupt? Because I don't know how long I'm going to be on this. I just want to say it's entirely appropriate for the council to reconsider a vote. We've done that in the past. If folks feel that they want to reconsider the way they voted for various reasons, that is entirely appropriate. So, you know, I'm just, I'm going to just insert that. I don't have a problem with that. We've done it in the past, like I said. So, you know, where folks think that, you know, a vote has been taken, that it's, you know, set in stone, it's not necessarily, you know, that way. So I just want to say that, you know, that is not unusual. We have done that in the past. But again, if folks have that, you know, that urge to revisit the way they did vote, that is, again, entirely appropriate.
Thank you, Linda. All right. So at this time, I'm going to ask if all of the council has had enough time to review and consider all of the applicants. Zach, have you had enough time?
Yes, yes. Yes. Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I have as well. At this time, I will ask the council if there is any suggested motion. So hearing none? Is there anything else? I think that concludes our discussion.
I can, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Is there a second? All second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Linda?
I am.
All opposed? Five. Motion fails. Two, five. All right. So is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Linda?
I am.
All right. Motion adjourned at 6:47. Thank you very much.